Good evening and welcome to the March 23 meeting of the Select Board. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Under RSA 91A emergency provisions during the state of emergency by order of Governor Sununu, certain requirements of RSA 91A right to no law have been relaxed. Pursuant to RSA 91A 23B, the Select Board Chair declares that the ongoing COVID-19 health crisis is an emergency and the physical presence of a quorum is not reasonably practical within the period of time requiring action. The facts upon which that determination was made are as follows: On March 11, 2020, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 a pandemic. On March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency concerning the Nobel Coronavirus Disease, COVID-19. On March 13, 2020, the Governor of New Hampshire declared a state of emergency. State and federal agencies recommend that gatherings of 10 or more people be avoided. All right.
So before you continue, Andy, Ken, George Bailey, can you hear okay?
Yes, like this.
Terrific, thank you. All right. Chairperson now.
All righty. Public hearing, we have a public hearing on the issuance of a building permit at 17 Range Road, a Class 6 road for Eric Ocella, map 228, lot 15.
Chairperson 16, Range Road is the actual license.
Did I say?
You said 17.
16, I stand corrected, thank you. All right. So, opening this, hopefully everybody's had a chance to see the items and review it. Any comments from the board?
I made a report.
Go ahead, George.
Well, my comment is that when we looked this up, there was another person listed on D, Abigail Ocella, and when you look on the application, the application does not have that name, and I would ask the Chair to consider that if we do approve it, we have to feel that Abigail Ocella's name will be added to it.
Excuse me, I had a quick claim deed done to have my name removed from the deed, and that hit the state of the town of Barrington.
The first one is due today.
You have the today application. No, the applicant didn't the application.
The claim deeds in the application.
Okay. John, what were you going to say, John Hawkins?
The transport came in today, Amanda got it today from the registry deed.
Thank you, John.
I had questioned whether the planning board had actually had this gone before the planning board, apparently it did most recently, and has been cleared by the planning board.
Tracy, for the folks listening, you should probably speak up because the closest microphone is Timbers.
Okay. So I had questioned whether or not the application for the permit had gone before the planning board because I did not see that on the application. It has since cleared the planning board.
Correct.
Some of the commentary that came out of the planning board was that to make sure that the recommendations of the highway supervisor or highway manager, as well as the fire chief, were both taken into consideration. And I don't know, Police Chief Joy, I don't think had anything above and beyond what has already been recommended from Chief Walker and Mr. Morrow.
Perfect.
Anything else?
And the applicant is here, is there anything you would like to say before the board takes action?
Um, no, we'll see what happens and go from there, I guess. Also, I just know that if you want 20.
I can't hear.
Width, you can't quite get it. Right now it's about 18, and it's rock wall to rock wall.
Okay.
So, I know those are property line rock walls.
I believe one, part of what was discussed.
So George, what he said was, one of the things that was talked about was the 20 feet
of width, and he didn't believe we'd be able to get it because it goes rock wall to rock wall, and it's 18 feet in its current state.
Thank you.
Go ahead, George.
I said thank you, I'm all set.
Yeah. One of the things that I know we looked at in the planning board was the actual dimensional requirements, is that there is a 30 foot right of way through that space.
Yeah.
So it is something that we would need to, to hold true to in the sense that that has a 30 foot right of way through it. Dan?
The travelway needs to be 16 feet with two foot shoulders, you're 20 feet unstructured view. If you can take and put extra gravel, and then have the base, and then a foot on your side, that's unstructured. So you might be able to do it. I did not physically do observation on it. I don't know what's there, but it could be done unrestricted. So it might be.
That's kind of how it's set up now.
Yes, Chief Walker is on here.
Can we ask Chief Walker to weigh in on this?
Uh, Chief Walker, can you provide your input?
There are some, some fire code requires that being accessible to be 20 feet wide. If you guys can, if, if I can redone what we've done in the past with private roads that were not late, that didn't have the 20 foot. You guys kind of had to go with what there was there, but that'd be the town road. If there's, if the town road waited more than 20 feet, then you've got to meet the fire code, or you would have to look at other watches, which may include sprinkling the home. That's a fire code requirement, that's not my requirement, it's a fire code requirement.
Thank you.
Are there other homes on Range Road?
One.
Towards your end of it?
Well, there's one on the other side, but they come in on the other side over a bridge, which has no access to fire apparatus. They have to come my way.
But there is.
If they go down a Class 6, it's all mud.
But there is a, that Class 6 does connect to another lot at the end of your road.
That is the one that's going all into Confrontation Assault, or whatever those guys are that do all those, my monkey weighing on that. It's getting all into a trust with no billable rights allowed to it.
Late property?
Yeah.
What's that, Dan?
It's a latent property.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and it should be conservation, hopefully by June of 2021.
There's still the access requirement, though.
Right.
That even regardless of the use.
Right, no, my access is through my property side, not even considered Range Road then.
No, I think what Chairperson now is bringing up is access would need to be maintained so that that property owner, regardless of if it's conservation or not, could still get through to the property. They still take access from Range Road. Yep. And so you had said that the property lines were stone wall to stone wall, and you had taken a measurement, or there's some measurement that it's about 18 feet, stone wall to stone wall?
Yeah, the way it sits right now, yeah.
Have you had a surveyor out there? So the town's records show this 30 foot right of way through there, and it being a town road, it's possible that the stone walls aren't in the right spot. It's possible that the stone wall extends, or the property line extends beyond where the stone walls are. Have you had any surveying done? Do you know?
Not, because of the width of the road now.
Okay. And so I think, and what Chief Walker indicated, you know, where the, in situations where the right of way doesn't exist wide enough to meet the standard, the Select Board has the ability to waive that requirement. Where the, where a right of way, sufficient right of way exists to meet code, to meet the fire code here, 16 foot travelway and two foot shoulders, the Select Board can't waive that aspect of the fire code in order to do that. So if, like I said, what we have, and I know the planning office looked into the width of the right of way there, what we have say, says that the travel way, the right of way through there is 30 feet. If you had something that said that it wasn't, I mean, the Select Board could certainly consider that, but the information we have right now is that it's 30 feet wide.
Can I, can I, again, this is Abby. Our property has been surveyed from Providence Road to the corner of my son's property, and we built within the consents away from the stone wall, so our stone wall can't move, or we won't have enough room from our front door to the stone wall.
So when you had your property surveyed, do you know if the surveyor concluded that the stone wall on that side was indeed the property line?
He never said that it wasn't, so that's our property line.
Unfortunately, though, that's not how that necessarily works.
So, is Chief Walker still on the phone?
Yep, Chief Walker's on.
He got the place.
So, Chief Walker, can you hear us? Chief?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, so if in fact, this is an 18 foot road width, and it does not meet fire code, would you still be able to respond to an emergency on this road?
So, so the issue goes back to, it's that this board nor myself has authority to overrule a fire code. So the only one that can overrule that fire code and get away from that 20 foot road width is an authorization from the fire marshal. The other option is that I can waive that if they agree to sprinkle the resident. They can use that 18 foot, but my, it's a fire code, it's an answer fire code in the fire marshal, the answer fire marshal is the only one that can overrule that.
So, what can I expect for a cop to sprinkle the home?
I have no idea, man. There's no need better question for perhaps John Hawkins.
I have another question, does it help that we have a fire pond at the end of Range Road?
Not, not from a fire code perspective.
Okay.
Do you want to table this until we determine the actual width of the road?
Yeah, so I think, like I said, the, the records we have show the history of the road being 30 feet. Now, it's possible that something's wrong, but I think we would need to have something that showed that that wasn't the case.
It sounds like one way or another, it's a sprinkle, or it's 20 feet wide, or don't do anything.
What about getting it surveyed?
It's not going to help me, I know with the rock wall, I mean, I can dig the rock to the rock wall, on top of the rock wall, have it almost cave in, and I could probably gain two feet, but I'm going to cut down a lot of trees in the meantime, up against my neighbor's house, and then he's going to probably come back and say, you can't do it.
Well, if it's the town's right of way, so it's a town road, so if, if indeed, which I'm saying that's the information we have, it could be wrong, it's likely not, but it could be wrong, but if the information we have that it's a 30 foot right of way through there, then that's a town's right of way. So that means the town can authorize the removal of any tree, you don't have to offer it, offer it to the property owner, unless the, the road is held in feet, but the, the stone wall being there, and Mark, I know you went up there, you didn't happen to take a measurement between the stone walls, did you?
Oh, it would have been, I figured for a 13 foot travelway, probably maybe a two foot shoulder on the uphill side, and a three foot shoulder on the downhill side, and that's about all you could get out of it. As far as drainage swells on each side of it, and take care of the water.
To maintain.
Probably 18 wall to wall is pretty much accurate.
Between, between the stone walls.
The faces of the wall, not the center of the wall.
And so Chief Walker, what would you or the Fire Marshal's office need to see if indeed the, if indeed the property line is only 18 foot, if the right of way through there is only 18 feet, what would you or the Fire Marshal's office need to see to determine that, to determine if it's ever there?
So, so if the emphasis is on the, I believe, and maybe this is a better question for John Hawkins, but I believe the emphasis is on the individual that is trying to get the permit to show what both sides have been surveying, what the width of the road is. Typically, the fire marshal, if you came back and said that you could only get 18 feet, he'll say, well, then your option to build this to sprinkle the resident.
Dan?
I'm making a hypothesis, I do not see the law, I don't know if the grade can come up, if you get 18 feet, then you use the rock wall as far as the width, you only need 20 feet unrestricted. You might have to take some tree to overhang, but you need 20 feet unrestricted area. And I don't know if you can get away with that, bring a little more fill up, just bring the road up, and you wouldn't have a ditch line, but you put a good crown to it, and the rock wall would be a ditch line.
You'd probably just be going then.
Be electric fill up.
I don't care about that, it's cheap enough surveyor.
Yeah.
Can we table this until we determine?
Well, I mean, if I got to make it 20 feet wide, I'm going to make it 20 feet wide then. I mean, if that's what it's going to be, you get the permit.
One of those rock walls is higher than the other one, no?
Right, my parents is the lowest one, the other one's up 60.
So you got, you got this situation going on, you're going to go to the top of the rock walls, that road is going to be like that.
But the one on the hillside, I can dig into the hillside to get, because you can say, if I could use the side of the driveway still as a runway for the water, and you'd count that, and you could get.
It's 20 feet unrestricted.
Yeah, you can get it that way then.
So John and Rick, the conversation happening, if you didn't hear, was that the applicant indicated if 20 feet's required, then he'll accomplish 20 feet. The, the thought being, the, on the uphill side, the hill can be driven through in order to gain some unrestricted view there, and on the downhill side, the stone wall could be built into the two foot shoulder in order to have the full 20 feet. So the, what the Select Board would do, considering this building permit issuance on a Class 6 road, is the Select Board will offer out this issuance with certain restrictions, meaning that you wouldn't receive a certificate of occupancy until those restrictions were met. And so one of those restrictions would be a 20 foot trackway to the satisfaction of the state fire code. And so, if, and it's, the Select Board hasn't made the decision yet, but if they did, that would be the requirement, that would, that would be when that requirement would be in place.
Dan?
When you said driveway, road, I meant for the road.
Oh, excuse me, road, misspoke, thank you, Dan.
Also, the sprinkler home, it's around five dollars a square foot. So you just look at around 7,500 bucks for a sprinkler system. Plus the cistern in the water, it's light one. There you go. There was another 25.
Uh, George, are you ready for him?
Yes, I would if I please, Mr. Chairman.
I couldn't hear him, what was that?
One more time, George.
What, uh, is it under recognition, Chair?
Yes.
What, what do we have? There's a 30 feet for the obstructed section. My very surveying engineer is on the stone wall, he has indicated that the stone wall is not to be considered for the boundary, so I don't know how that's going to take effect with the 30 feet there, the position of the road is at right now, so I've never, I don't know how Chairwoman has to handle that.
Okay, and so, Select Person Bailey's indicating, we'll enter from Barrington, our engineering, adds a note to the stone wall that says, interior stone wall, not a boundary.
I, I have a statement, is he talking, there is a cattle path between our two, so there is the one that runs, but our property, the other one don't, I think that might be the one that they're talking about not being a boundary, not the one that runs along Range Road.
It could be George doing it.
I'm right here, I'm looking at it. Go ahead, Rick.
Because the clarification on the sprinkler system, it would be no system required, that would, the residential system, it would work off the residential water for the residents. So that, obviously, that part wouldn't get caused, uh, cost, and again, I'm not sure, maybe John Hawkins could weigh in on whether it would be a residential system cost.
It, it costs around $5 a square foot.
Go ahead.
I think we have a recommendation, we can make, do with the rock wall on your 20 feet, I think we can approve within conditions.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a more comfortable.
So, okay, so.
I'll make a motion to approve with the distance, that's all.
So, motion to approve the building permit on 16 Range Road, on a Class 6 road, with the following.
Conditions are set up.
In, in addition to this, if the 20 feet cannot be met, then the house must be sprinkled in the residential sprinkler system.
Correct.
I'll amend it to that.
Is that your amendment?
Yeah.
Then I would second that.
All right, we'll call vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Vote?
He said no.
No? Okay.
Aye.
Naff aye.
And so for the record, the conditions, including the if not 20 feet wide residential sprinkler, one and a half inch gravel from the last house to the new driveway entrance, construct a crown to shed water, create ditch lines to carry runoff, keep unimproved section of Range Road clear, keep drainage from developed lot off Range Road, grade road with supplemental gravel from Stagecoach Road to new driveway, widen road to 20 feet pursuant to the fire code, improve road to a point beyond the new driveway suitable for turning around fire apparatus, pave 16 feet at the end of Range Road to protect Stagecoach Road. So the building inspector would be prepared to issue the building permit application, and those are the conditions to issue a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Thanks for coming out.
All right. Appointments, so, Select Board, Mr. Air?
Do you want to set that board up first before we go?
That's, that's what he's on.
Yes, that's all rules and procedure right now for the board.
That's the first appointment.
Select Board organization. So we are at the point where, according to Section 1D of the Select Board Rules of Procedure, the procedures for elected officers fouls. A, one annually, at the first meeting of the Select Board after town election, the members thereof shall choose from among their number a chair and vice chair. Is there anyone who would like to be nominated as the chair, chairperson?
I would like to be nominated as the chairperson.
I will second that nomination. Anyone else?
I will third that.
All right, George, that was Tracy nominated herself, Andy seconded it.
I heard it.
Great.
You want to vote? Hold on, that's one way, one.
All votes have to be roll call vote.
Roll, yeah, roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Bailey? George, your vote?
I'll vote yes.
I'll abstain.
I'll vote yes.
Congratulations, Tracy.
Nomination for the vice chair.
I nominate Andrew Napp.
And I second that nomination.
All right.
Aye.
Secosa aye.
Article five. Vote.
Justice George.
Bailey aye and Napp aye. All right, I'm abstaining, I was nominated, I'll shut up. Turn it.
Thank you, Andy.
All right. With that, I will turn it over to the new chairperson.
Great. So the next thing we're working on is our 2020 Committee Commissions and Board Appointments. We are ultimately responsible for making sure that we appoint members of appropriate committees. Terms for appointments typically expire March 31, and the Select Board is annually considered for appointments at the second meeting in March. Has everyone sent in the committees that they'd like to be liaisons or ex officio members to, if there's ex officio members on these committees?
So that is a little bit different than this, so these are for the appointments the board will make for residents to those boards, committees, and commissions.
Oh, I'm going to request that we go into non-public for a portion of that.
Definitely, so I would recommend tabling that until further discussion after non-public tonight.
Very good.
To your point about the committees and commissions, other board members would like to be on, now that you're chair, they will be lobbying you for what they'd be on, and it'll be your decision to announce those appointments at the April 13 meeting.
Okay, I think most important, if everyone can select what they're most interested in, using the table that Connor has put together, our town administrator has indicated the committees that, whether it's a liaison position, do we have any ex officio?
Planning board.
Planning board, okay. So, other than planning board, the rest are liaisons for the Select Board. If there's nights that work best for you, and those are the best committees for you, please indicate that. I know I've indicated Tuesdays are never, never good. And then we'll gather all that information together, you know, and bring it to the meeting. Goal development is next?
A review of the minutes.
Oh, sorry, where's that?
Are we going to vote on the, the votes right now, Mr. Chairman?
After non-public.
After non-public, I, I think there's a variety of things to discuss there. Did everyone review meeting minutes from the March 9, 2020 meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Was there any changes or recommended changes to the meeting minutes? Tiffany has a change.
There was one small correction, in the header, it reads February 24th, it should read March 9th.
Yeah, we all did. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes, as amended.
Okay.
I'll second it.
So we have a first, we have a second, there, George, you were at the meeting as well, so there's four of us, you'd have to abstain because you're part of the meeting. Roll call vote.
Naff aye.
Article five?
Aye.
George?
We're done.
We're done.
And public comments next, Tracy?
Oh, great. Public comments are limited to 15 minutes, three minutes per person. Anyone, class, anyone?
George, anybody participating electronically that'd like to make a public comment right now? Rick says aye.
Moving on to goal development.
Yes.
Okay, so, under goal development, we were presented with a variety of ideas for goals that both continued, goals from last year that still need completion, or may have been started and need to be brought to completion, as well as a list of some recommended ideas. One in particular that stood out to me as very important was the working through the library issue. Based on the list that was presented to us by the town administrator, is there anything on the list you would like to remove?
I believe some of these are wrapped up and will come off naturally, the, like the police renovation, the fire renovation, I'm assuming at this point, those are, we have wrapped up what was the project tied to that, so I'm expecting that those will come off the list.
So Tracy's referring to an email I sent on March 19, which highlights recommendations for new goals. That is, yeah, that certainly will be coming off, and so I listed policy manual development and policy review schedule, highlighting the personnel policy, constructing the town hall, which would be one of those carriers from last year to bring you conclusion, development of a 10-year road improvement plan, work collaboratively with the library trustees to develop a proposal which voters can support, encourage widespread and complete community participation in the 2020 census. So those are just seed ideas for the Select Board to consider, you know, the Select Board developing proposals.
Select person Air?
Select person Air, I feel personally, this is going to be the toughest year I've come in on, a lot of people is up, we've got to keep that in mind is up, and the policies is up, what's going on today, it didn't affect us for a while, we don't know when the end's going to be, and that, one thing we keep in mind, first priority is to deal with what life today and work on the goals.
I personally think having strategic plans are important for any group or municipality to move forward. Were there any, so you would like to add a portion where there's a response to the follow-up from COVID-19, is that what I'm hearing, Select person?
Right, and then work positive on goals and stuff, don't get depressed, or certain things don't get poor, with the life on place terms.
Were there any aspects of the plan that were mentioned from the town administrator that anyone would like to remove? Otherwise, would anyone like to make a motion to accept those as our goals for the Select Board? Select person Air has made a motion.
I will second that motion.
Select person Napp has seconded that, and roll call vote.
Secosa aye.
Aye.
Naff aye.
Article five, Bailey?
I heard it.
Thank you.
So, Select Board members, I will take those introductory goals, develop them in develop them into more comprehensive goals with action items and distribute those for further comment from the board as a draft document. And my goal would be to get that feedback between now and the next meeting and present a final draft to be approved by the board at the next meeting. So look for that, thank you.
Next up is the fire department, oh, I'm sorry, we skipped the staff reports. Would you like to speak, sir?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So first, again, the town reports are available. The entire PDF document is available online at barrenton.nh.gov/2019townreport. I wanted to let the community and the board know that the recreation facility addition is currently being advertised. That request for qualifications is being advertised now. And this is George calling, one second. Mr. Bailey, how are you? Hello, George? Did he lose his connection? George, can you still hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
There's a lot of background noise, I can hardly hear Tracy so good.
Okay, so what I'll recommend is, here, do you want to take that microphone away from yours? Because I think when you're typing, people are having trouble hearing. I think I still don't have speakers. Yes, try it like that.
How's that, George?
George, can you say something and we'll get confirmation from Rick Walker if he can still hear you?
Whatever changes you made, that was tremendous. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
We can.
Okay. The only thing I don't like about that is the camera won't be able to hear it. So Chair, if we can just take a couple of minutes and resolve this so the video recorder can still hear the audio. So unfortunately, the speakers on my phone are not working, likely related to an incident where I almost fried it earlier. So I'd like to, Tiffany, if you can pull up the meeting on that computer, if you can try to pull up the meeting on that computer. It's on Wi-Fi, right?
Yeah.
And if we can get those speakers going and put this microphone on it. Uh, thank you to Air in Paradise for providing that feedback that people couldn't hear anything, which George also reiterated. You don't have it pulled up, do you Jim?
I don't.
The meeting on that. Thank you for your patience, those who are following along. Yes. If you go to your calendar, just click on calendar and it'll be an appointment at 6:30.
So I have an appointment, but it doesn't have any of that.
Scroll down, there's no details there.
That's interesting.
Okay, Tiffany, I have it.
You have it up?
Yep. George, can you hear me? You got to mute it. If you mute it on your phone. So I need, but I need to have the speaker on, that's what I was trying to do. So maybe Tiffany can mute her microphone, that's all I'll take.
You want me to turn this one off and join the meeting or not?
Uh, you can keep trying, I don't think it will need it, I think this will work. Yep, one second, George. George, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, correct it. Okay, George, you're still there, right?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, I think we're back in business. John Huckins, can you raise your hand if you can hear George? George, say something.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I want to thank my guests for the information, thank you.
Awesome. Okay, sorry, Chairperson, I think we're ready to continue the meeting.
Okay, so staff report, Mr. Marab.
Oh, yes.
Your own.
Right where we left off, right? So the recreation facility addition is currently being advertised, so the proposals for qualifications are due back to the town on April 6th. The Recreation Commission will be making a recommendation to the Select Board by April 22nd, and the Select Board is anticipated to consider a decision at the April 27th meeting. So the RFQ is currently advertised on the town's website for anybody interested. Also advertised on the town's website is the 2020 paving projects request for proposals, and those are due back April 8th, and are planned to be considered by the Select Board at the April 13th meeting. So I also have a list of items available for signature, which I will read off here. So we have one application denial for a disabled exemption, 715 Berry River Road, the property is not the applicant's primary residence. One abatement denial for 80 Providence Road, 80 Providence Road, and after review of the property for the abatement, the value of the property increased by $4,200, and the assessor is recommending the Select Board deny the abatement. One abatement approval for the common area of Alwood Drive Beach in the amount of $68. The property is common law for subdivision, and the property is exempt, and bill should not have been generated. One abatement approval for the common area of Spiny Farm subdivision in the amount of $9. Again, it's common law for the subdivision and should be exempt. NAP summary check register 2020-22 for check date of March 17th, and AP summary check register 2020-24 for check date March 23rd, payroll manifest 2020-21 for check date March 12th, payroll manifest 2020-23 for check date March 19th. So those are available for board signature, and Tiffany, do you have any else?
That was it?
Terrific. Ready to continue, Chairperson.
Okay, fire department wage system. We all received information on our call firefighters. I did bring up the question whether this was increasing expected expenses or funded numbers, and I received the following information from our town administrator, which is that it does not increase those lineups.
Right, so these, for the rest of the board members, this is for your information. The compensation study, a goal of the compensation study was to pursue a wage correction for the fire department. The fire chief worked within the recommendations of the compensation study to develop a grade and step assignment for the various employees that he has working for him, and some for officers, for the full-time, for the part-time and per diem, and also for the call members. The benefit of adapting the wage scale, the pay plan for this, this isn't something that should have to be constantly updated. Any cost of living increase will, you know, say a 1% cost of living increase will increase the pay plan 1% and correct those wages, and other than that, they should be able to remain at their location on the pay plan. So to Select Person or Chairperson, Harikoff's point, the budget, the budget that was approved by voters for the fire department will fund these corrections. No additional money deposited into the fire department budget. So the fire chief develops that budget based on anticipated call volume, historical call volume, et cetera. So certainly, if there were an overabundance number of calls, the fire chief and I may be coming to the board and asking for an emergency addition, but that would only be if there was unusual call volume, not because of these wage changes.
Would anyone like to comment on the changes to the wage system for the fire department? Would anyone wish to make a motion?
Don't need a motion, just for your information.
You're not expecting any change from us?
We already.
Aren't there level changes that took place that need to be approved?
No, they all.
You already approved those with the full comp study?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Stormwater asset management grant.
So the town approved, pursuing a $30,000 asset management grant, the next step of the process is to advertise a request for qualifications pursuant to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services qualifications-based selection process for an engineering consultant. I'm seeking the board's approval to advertise a request for qualifications for this project specifically. The first order of business, once they're selected through this process, will be to develop a scope that we submit with the grant materials.
Select person, aye?
Do we need a vote for us to accept the grant?
So, no, we haven't applied for the grant yet. The, because of the format of the grant, the town meeting is required to authorize the borrowing of up to $30,000, which has been reimbursed through the program. So getting that authorization from town meeting allows us to pursue the grant opportunity, and in order to pursue the grant opportunity, we have to select an engineering consultant through the qualification-based selection process.
Is the.
Select person, aye?
Is the engineering cost covered in the $30,000?
Yes.
Are the qualifications for this specifically noted through the state? Do you want me to need to write?
Yes.
Okay. Would I like to make a motion to allow authorization for our town administrator to write the RFQ?
I'll make a motion to allow the town administrator for authorization to write the RFQ seeking a qualified consultant to develop that project scope for the grant.
I'll second it, Air.
Okay, roll call vote?
Napa, aye.
Article five.
Sakosha, aye.
Air, aye.
George, aye.
Okay, very good.
Uh, Chairperson Harikoff, I have one other thing additional on old business if you're willing to consider it.
Could you share with us what it is?
Yes. The, it's an update from the Fire Truck Committee and the Fire Chief regarding the purchase of a vehicle for the fire tanker.
In reference to a cab, correct?
In reference to the cab.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the Fire Chief and Truck Committee have been working with the truck manufacturer to determine the best option for the town, again, the best interest of the town and the town's money. The manufacturer actually made the recommendation to the Truck Committee that the extended cab version that we had originally specified wouldn't be as functional as we were anticipating it to be. Be difficult to climb in there with gear, wouldn't be really functional storage space. So the Truck Committee and the Fire Chief worked together to come to the conclusion that we'd actually be better off with a single cab, a straight cab opposed to that extended cab. We ended up saving the town about $25,000. And so the, really just letting the board know that this decision has been made and that's what they're pursuing. It's a change of the specifications, but in the town's best interest. And I think, as I said before, credit to the Truck Committee for continuing to try to save the town money, and honestly, credit to the manufacturer for being willing to say, hey, look, you know, you might not want to go down this road, even though, you know, they lose out on some of that money also. So the Fire Chief's still on the line if he'd like to add anything or if anybody has any questions for him.
Select person, Air, I made a hypothesis. Wouldn't be, when they looked at the truck and the tangs, like the spurts on the weights up, so the handle and thing, I'm sure that's the manufacturer, geez, we do this, this. They're trying to get the spec out. It's probably easier to go, it's more functional. Or same with that. That's how I hypothesis. I may be correct about you.
Chief Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to weigh in on the change to the cab?
So what they found out in talking to Northeast was is that the seat will slide forward and it'll be, it'll be tumbling for somebody at home up again to try to climb into that, into that area. And so the committee went back and started looking at, well, what if we just leave it for storage? And then when they started looking at roughly the price difference between a extended cab and a regular conventional cab, with around a $25,000 savings, they should really feel that it made sense to spend an extra $25,000 to store a few lights and stuff in there. So they came back and asked me about, you know, just the score of the straight conventional cab. And so that's why we're here tonight, to, you know, to, it's a blessing to allow us to do it. And one, understand that it, because the town of Barrenton is fine with a cab, I mean chassis, that it's only on our end that we're saving, it's not like we're reinventing the wheel. We, when we did the Chevy pickup, as a perfect example, I bought the Chevy truck with an extended cab with the idea that we could get a few extra people in there. And the Chevy was never conducive to carrying more than the people in front seat because there just wasn't a lot of room behind that seat. So that's when we bought the Dodge with the full, full cab so the people could ride. And that's really what we're trying to do here with this thing is that because it's a lot of conducive, people are going to get reluctant to climb in the back and sit in that seat, it'll probably never get used, so it doesn't make sense to me for that part of the cab bed.
Very good.
Great. Thank you for considering that.
Um, do you need a motion?
By consensus of the board, you've been informed and you can.
Good.
Perfect. Thank you again.
Please come and talk to me, thank you.
New business?
Yes.
You want to list that or you want to move forward with each of these or are they being placed on other meetings?
Uh, no, new business are agenda items that we will cover tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're moving on to the excavator rental recommendation versus purchase.
Uh, yes, recommendation for rental of an excavator. So as we let the board know, we went out to bid for an excavator rental. As indicated in the town administrator report, the road agent and I, mostly the road agent, spent a lot of time figuring out what was in the town's best interest regarding an excavator. Really comes down to the size excavator we've been renting. It's tough to justify a purchase of that size of equipment. It's a little smaller than what we would really need to justify having year-round and investing in the, in the equipment. The weight class that we could justify purchasing a piece of equipment, there just aren't a lot of opportunities, there's not a lot of equipment that exists in that weight class. So for the time being, the road agent would like to continue renting the mini excavator, supplementing with the backhoe that we own. And as indicated in the report, there's money properly budgeted for this. We went out to bid for CEO bid, invited at least three organizations to put in for the bid. NorTrax was the only one that got a bid in on time. We had one come the next day and one come today that had also put in for it. I asked the road agent to review those bids, even though they came in late and weren't qualifying, to determine if it would change his recommendation. So he's here tonight to speak to it, he still recommends NorTrax for a six-month rental, $3,000 per month. And I know Select Person, Air, had a really great suggestion to save the town some money for it also. That's right.
One, anyone want to speak?
We can very easily shave the $800 mobilization fee off of the NorTrax bid easily as long as the machine is in Pembroke and not some other faraway location. Just for your own information, to buy that, launch that John Deere machine today is $111,333 is what would be the purchase price for that machine today. Is that with all the bucket, the twist bucket, the duckles, the buckets?
Absolutely. The, the other comparable machines that came through, the problem with them is they have the offset boom setup on, which is handy to dig around the building, but it sticks a lot of the leverage of that machine way out in front of the machine. That sort of boom is pinned to the front of the machine way out here instead of at your shoulder on a conventionally destructive machine. A lot of the times in these bitches, we're trying to reach way over, a big gap over a big hole, and there's a chance that that extra leverage by that swing knuckle on those other machines could just haul the machine right over. I think we'd be spending more time fighting to tip the machine over than working with it. Another thing on those other two machines is there's a, the boom cylinder is right in the way of everything. On the Coboy that I looked at this afternoon, there's a shield on the boom cylinder. That's there for a reason, it's because the thing's always getting hit. The Takuyuki, the boom isn't, cylinders aren't quite as exposed, but they're still there. The conventional excavator configuration, the boom is just, that cylinder is just tucked out of the way, you never have to worry about it. You never have to worry about it. Was that the Kubota KX-80? KX-80. If you look, if you look at a picture of that machine, you'll see a shield right over the boom piston. Right there. Yep?
Select person here, tell me the question.
Yeah, well, I have a 305, kind of going seams, the twist boom's up. And I'm rocking all the guy, whoever drives it up. There is, I didn't see what he's talking about. I just go for the right.
I have a quick question mark to you. Is life expectancy on this particular piece of equipment more than six years? Because it appears it would take forever itself for six years of work.
The life expectancy of the machine itself is way beyond six years.
Okay.
The life expectancy of the undercarriage on any track machine, you'd be lucky to get five years.
Okay.
And then you'd be looking at minimum of 10 grand to do on a track or add to the, that's the problem with the track machine.
What's the annual maintenance on that?
Annual maintenance cost?
Yes.
Oh, it's basically.
Would we be getting somebody to do it or would your guys be doing it?
In shock. The maintenance, it would depend how the deal would be set up. If we bought it from NorTrax, like our loader currently and our backhoe is maintained by NorTrax. Don't know if that's part of the purchase deal or not, but that's what I was hoping to have.
Select person?
Typically, when we, when you purchase equipment, you get usually at least a three-year service agreement with that. And if you get the extended agreement, sometimes it's as long as six years or even 10, depending on what you negotiate on that. But I know when I bought my, the last two cats I bought, I think I had a six-year deal on them and I had them at no interest.
Well, so your recommendation to rent versus buy is because of the life expectancy of the undercarriage?
It's, it's a high maintenance item compared to anything on rubber tires. Okay? This thing, you just use it, then you send it back. You're done with it, your headache is gone. I wish that we could find something on rubber tires to fill the bill of what this thing has to do. We tried out two of them last fall, just wasn't cutting. And they were well over $200,000 to purchase those. They were both too small.
Select person air wants to add?
One thing the town administration, we don't have water or sewer. So, there's not a demand for it during the winter time. You could do mowers if it was rubber tires, something like that, or whether permit. So, idea to regrow and find more of a need, it's cheaper for us to just send it back. We're not paying for maintenance.
Great.
Okay. So, any other comments, questions or concerns? George, did you have something you wanted to weigh in on? George?
No, thank you.
No, okay. So, does anyone want to make a motion to accept the grant?
Should be awarding the bid, yeah?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, any seconds?
One second.
Okay, so, select person?
Air aye. I do have a comment though. I only get out to three people and put it out on the sites and bid, but for next year, you know, if we can think about some more rental places, because people are busy right now and you're not always gonna, you know, not everybody out there is looking for work. That's why I came across the KX-80 today. And I know you're not fond of the piston and the piston shield on it, but I mean, I talked to reliable equipment out of Dover and they would give it for $2,900 for a month. So, I mean, we'd be saving 600 bucks and if you could do the same thing. And they're right vocal, so, I mean, if there was a problem that came up right away, they would be able to come out, not traveling from Concord, just to, you know, just to get that out there.
So, we have a motion and we have a second in order to accept what?
I had a question. You're talking, that's only 12, 14,000.
That's an 18,000 pound.
That is 18?
Yeah.
So, we, we have a motion and we have a second on accepting the NorTrax bid for the six month, 18,000? Is that how you're handling it?
Yes.
Yes, and talking to the salesman today from NorTrax, if it only ended up being four months, we wouldn't get whacked. He would still own the 3,000.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote, starting with select person now.
Aye.
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 Air aye. Air aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Have fun tonight, guys.
Next is the 2020 budget line item transfers. Want to speak to this?
I'd be, I'd be glad to.
Mr. David Miller Springer?
So, the, instead of the budget process, I set aside $50,000 in the incident fund to fund the priorities of the compensation study. The budget was finalized on January 6th before the select board had an opportunity to review the final recommendations of the compensation study. The compensation study was, the recommendations were approved at the January 27th meeting. And so, the budget was approved by voters on, at town meeting. And what I'm asking you to do tonight is distribute the funds to fund the compensation study throughout the budget. But, in the time since January when the budget was developed and now, there have been some other changes that I'd like to distribute as well. So, primarily, and really what has resulted in the big dollar numbers is changes in positions that have adjusted some of the salary requirements and also some census changes. So, whether it's positions changing in an interim or coverage changes made by employees to reduce the budget necessary for their benefits. So, just to do that one thing. So, in overall, what I'm asking for is an approval, a motion and approval to make the line item transfers as identified in the document that I provided.
So, a motion to accept distributing the compensation study funds and other census changes is outlined in the March 23rd, 2019 budget line item transfer document.
March 23rd, but yes.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
I approve the motion.
And I, I would second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call?
Matt aye.
Harakaw aye?
Sakoshka aye.
Air aye.
George?
Air aye.
Erica?
The only thing I'll add, just for your own information, so, the result of this, instead of taking money out of the incident fund, we've actually added $32,290 to the incident fund. And so, the difference from staff, we had a reduction of $11,515 on wages. On benefits, which was primarily the census changes, we had a reduction of $46,204. So, a total reduction just from staff changes and census changes of $57,719. And so, that paid for the funding, that paid for the compensation study implementation and also contributed $30,000, $32,000 to the incident fund. So, it's important to keep in mind that next year when I'm talking to and saying, hey, between when we did the budget and now, we've had all these census changes that have put us in the other direction, no, but the tide doesn't always flow in. Sometimes it flows out. So, don't, don't, you can't say I didn't tell you that.
I appreciate the messenger was good.
Yes. So, it worked in our favor this year from a budgetary perspective. So, thank you. And select person, chairperson Harakaw, if I may, I had sent out to the board, I believe it was earlier today, one additional line item change that we identified. If you're willing to consider that, I'll describe it to the board. So, essentially, all this is, is making, taking one budget line and distributing those funds into two budget lines. So, creating a budget line right now for end of service. So, when somebody accrues their earned time, leaves employment, we pay them out. All those funds are budgeted in one line. The proper accounting method would be to separate the wages portion and the benefits portion. So, while we were making these line item transfers, the finance office would prefer to create that new line, split up the money. I sent out, and I have a copy here for anybody that'd like to see it, what it would be doing. So, it'd be taking two budget lines, one with $15,000 in it, one with 1,800 in it, splitting up the $15,000 line to $11,673 and the benefits portion $3,327. So, we're not adding or subtracting any dollars. All the money's staying within the same function, but just the proper accounting for our end-of-service line. So, I'd be interested in a motion to approve that if you're willing, or I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve that last change?
I'll make the motion to approve the change, that's noted.
One second?
Okay, roll call vote, starting with select person now.
Matt aye.
Harakaw aye?
Sakoshka aye. Air aye.
Very good. Motion very.
Thank you, Chairperson Harakaw.
So, the next thing is a recommendation from Barrington Assessing Agent that due to the current coronavirus 2019 pandemic, that we move or extend the date of any new applications for exemption and credits from the date of April 15th to the date of June 15th, allowing the town's people more time to file at the town hall.
June 15th or June 19th?
June 15th, it says. Any questions, concerns, ideas?
I apologize, it is incorrect, the list is June 19th in CI, but the correct date is the 15th. My apologies.
Parker?
Thank you.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
Yes, I have one, please, Vice Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you. I hope that with this change and everything else, this won't force us into having the treasurer get a tan to help cover any money. Do we have enough money left to sustain this budget money?
Yes, it's a good question, George, and this isn't anything I'm concerned about with an action like this. This is just giving those that are eligible for an exemption and credit more time to apply for it if it's a new applicant. And the, I put a note in my report that it's important to keep in mind this deadline will likely be after the first round of bills goes out. And because that's the case, if somebody were to pay their first half tax bill and then receive one of these exemptions or credits, they may need an abatement in order to refund them something they've already paid. So, it kind of puts us that, into that situation. The assessor and I have talked about it. And I think that's a risk that we're willing to take, given the good deed of giving folks more time. So, George, it's a good point, but that's not anything I'm concerned about right now. And in the broader topic of a tax anticipation note, we're fortunate that the select board has made a commitment to keeping our unassigned fund balance in the midpoint of the range. And that gives us flexibility from a cash flow perspective for any situation that may come up. In the news just recently, Durham is considering extending their deadline for their first half taxes or waiving any interest or penalties for businesses that don't make the first payment. And there's questions on whether that's legal or not. But a municipality wouldn't even be able to consider that if they didn't have the cash flow in order to keep the lights on. So, we're in a strong financial situation as it stands right now and extending the deadline, it wouldn't impact that. But thank you for the question, Mr. Bailey.
Any other questions?
I want to thank you for that information, it's very valuable. And I'm really glad to see that we don't have to use the anticipated note. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns or comments? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd make that motion, Vice Chair.
Okay, would anyone like to second the motion to move the new applications from April 15th to June 15th?
One second.
Okay, so motion second, so go ahead, roll call, question.
Matt aye.
Harakaw aye?
Air aye.
Okay. Town administrator job description, could you speak to just the changes in the job?
Add additional health insurance plan option is the next agenda item.
Oh, my apologies. So, at the last select board meeting, our town administrator have indicated that there may be a presentation for additional health insurance plan options. Do you want to speak to the reasoning behind this?
Absolutely. So, right now, the town offers employees two health insurance options. One is the benchmark, which the town pays 85% of the premium for. The next one is a little bit more of an expensive option that has some specialty care provisions. The town, through our health insurance provider, is able to offer three plans to employees, to enrollees. This plan that I'm proposing that we start offering July 1st, 2020, is a plan option that's more affordable. It has a deductible, a $1,000, $3,000 deductible. The premiums are less. The, this specific plan option is one that's designed for folks that have lighter health insurance utilization or are willing to be, participate more in health insurance, health industry consumerism, where they're choosing a provider based on what the cost of the insurance provider is. So, this is a plan that's designed to improve health insurance utilization. And it's also a plan that reduce, or results in lower premiums for enrollees. The proposal would be to continue the benchmark coverage from the town. So, still funding 85% of what the benchmark plan is and using those funds toward the premium. So, that would reduce, for any employee that would switch to this plan, that would reduce their premium contributions. The town's contributions would stay the same, but they would be on the hook fully for the deductible. And so, they're, again, now they have some skin in the game with the health insurance plan. They're hopefully making more responsible health insurance utilization decisions that's right for their family. And so, it doesn't cost the town anything to offer a third option. There would be no additional cost to the town in terms of premium coverage because that would remain the same. But I think it would be great, one, to offer our employees, our enrollees, a more affordable option, but also to offer a plan that encourages health insurance consumerism and having some better health insurance utilization.
Major medical still covered under this point. It's not a stripped down, we're not going to fine it, we're leaving our employees vulnerable when they are most.
It's a great question, and honestly, that's what I should have started with. The coverages are the exact same.
Very good. Does anyone have questions, concerns or comments regarding this? Would anyone like to make a motion to accept a third? A select person air would make a motion, would anyone second the motion? Select person Sakoshka seconds the motion. So, all those in favor, starting with Vice Chair Matt?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Aye. Aye. Yeah.
Very good.
Great, thank you. I'll continue to keep you posted. Now that we have your authorization, the team from Health Trust will be putting together presentation materials. Those will be electronic, given the coronavirus situation. So, be happy to share that information with the board, should they be interested in reviewing. And the, also we'll start making that third plan option known to the enrollees. Thank you.
Okay. Next up was the town administrator job description. Could we ask the town's administrator to speak to specifically just the changes that have been made in the job description proposed?
So, during the town administrator's annual review process, the select board identified one of the essential position functions that they felt was in need of an update. The, previously, the essential position function read, "All salary structures are created by the town administrator with range movement and step changes approved by the select board. All position descriptions are updated by the town administrator and approved by the select board." The proposed change is, "All salary structure changes are prompted by the town administrator with range movement and step changes approved by the select board. All position descriptions are updated by the town administrator and approved by the select board." So, that was the only change recommended, that's the only change presented to the board.
Make a motion to approve the town administrator job description as amended?
Second.
Second, very good. Roll call vote, starting with Vice Chair Matt?
Select person now, aye.
Harakaw aye? Yes, select person air?
You try to do a correction, I probably should second it because you won't act that.
He can still second it.
Well, he's still reviewed the.
Oh, you're gonna do it? Yeah.
Yes, that's fine. So, select person now.
Aye.
Bailey aye, Harakaw aye?
Air aye.
Okay, very good.
Great, thank you.
Um, next up was the town of Barrington services and the, I think, five different postings from five different departments regarding the novel coronavirus.
Yes, so I really just wanted to provide an update to the board and to the community about how the town of Barrington is paying close attention to the COVID-19 coronavirus and adapting our services, what seems like on a daily basis. So, attached to my town administrator report, I provided a sampling of the documents that have been distributed to residents and customers for the various services we provide. Some of those have even been updated since this town administrator report went out last week. So, the best place to go for up-to-date information is barrington.nh.gov/covid19. All of those notices and up-to-date versions are there and also other services that we don't have separate notices for. Some of the highlights, the library is. Some of the highlights, the library is closed completely, recreation programs are closed for whatever length of time, the schools are closed, and will continue staying closed. Important note on that, that the Recreation Commission and the Recreation Department will have to face is a significant amount of lost revenue to that department, which they rely on to put together their programs. Fortunately, they're in a position where they have a lot of money in the bank that gives them an opportunity to continue paying for programs, but just something important to keep in mind. The Tax Office and Town Clerk's Office are closed, except by appointment, and all of the services that we're able to provide electronically are itemized. We encourage everybody to call first, even if it's not something that they think we can do remotely or electronically, most of it we can, so please call first, and if you need to make an appointment, we're there to make an appointment for you, all the staff is still working. In the building and planning office, same thing, by appointment only, we have drop box outside for folks that are dropping things off. Overall, across the town, I want to definitely recognize the hard work of staff and department heads to adapt to these circumstances. I indicated early on that we have a commitment to providing these services. Some of the services, we don't have an option to provide, but others, it's important that we maintain some continuity. And staff and department heads across the entire town have worked really hard to adapt their services and do this. You know, we joke and, you know, we poke fun at Chief Walker at times and others in town about their use of technology. We're at a time now where department heads and departments across the town are using technology in a very efficient way to maintain service levels for residents and the customers of our services. And so, we're not going to get everything right every time, we're still going to have upset residents that can't walk straight into the Town Clerk's Office, but we are doing what we can, and it is changing a lot. So, thanks to department heads, that's where the information is. I have one other COVID-19 item to address, but happy to answer any questions or provide any more details.
I'd like to speak just very quickly, anybody who's watching tonight or listening tonight, we are doing our best to stay six feet apart, and we were less than 10 people in one large room, select person there.
I know, I'm listening at the time, I like to speak with iPhone. I've got a lot of public comment about people being out of school and stuff, and I would like the board, because April 5, they're going to make a decision if they're going to keep the schools shut down the rest of the year. And I would like the town administrator to poll and enjoy all employees and see how this is affecting their personal lives and stuff, and if he needs to make any changes or recommendations to accommodate these times. So, when we meet the 13th, and it's a change, it's a good change after the 6th, so the 13th, I'll have the information, so if we need to make any changes, make any recommendations.
So, maybe quick survey monkey with some, you know, list of 10 questions about childcare, about scheduling.
Well, anything, how this is affecting our employees.
I think one of the more important aspects too of being kind of self-quarantined is to be aware that it does affect people's mental and physical health, and that we do have available to all of our employees an employee assistance program. Select person there?
My general comment was, I don't know if I necessarily agree with the idea of needing for him to spend the time going around polling people, but to just put out a memo reinforcing the idea that we are here to support our employees and provide flexibility where necessary and where appropriate, to show that we are supportive of the fact that everybody has had to alter their life and their lifestyle a bit.
Well, I'm going to go with workplace, too, how this is affecting them.
Yeah, so, select person there, I think you bring up a really important point, and fortunately, in a small organization like Barrington, I feel like that's something we've been able to do pretty well, even just so far, working either directly with staff or working with department heads. Early on, we reached out to see anybody who was impacted by the schools being closed. Some staff members are home with their families because they don't have other childcare options. Some of them are doing some work from home, which is great, others, it's not feasible to do their work role from home, so they're not. Others have, you know, we've had staff members on quarantine, we've had staff members with family members on quarantine, and so, we've dealt with those situations on a case-by-case basis, and I think to select person Napp's point, we're a small enough organization where I think we're communicating that effectively, and we'll continue to communicate that, and I'd be happy to keep the board informed should circumstances change, which they may. Like you said, on April 5, it could be that schools are closed for another couple of weeks or longer, and that will have even longer impacts. It's important to note, and I didn't include it here, but also know that we're paying close attention to all state and federal laws, executive orders, and other actions that are happening that impact this. One very specifically is the federal government, starting April 2, if by mandate, anybody out taking care of their child, anybody out on quarantine or taking care of a loved one is required to be paid through their employer. There's a reimbursement through payroll taxes for every organization except state and federal government, or state and local government. So, we will be, we've been doing it anyways, and that was a decision I made, anybody who's been impacted, we've been paying them, I think there will be some, the emergency funding available that the town will pursue, but it's the right thing to do. So, now we're required to do it, and we'll continue doing it, but we won't be seeing any of the reimbursement that some businesses and nonprofits will be seeing. But we're following all of that information also, we've been provided some great documents from colleagues in other communities, from our various attorneys and whatnot, so.
I think it's important to know, certainly on the different social media sites, people have been targeting different people they see behaving in certain ways. People should behave responsibly, they should follow the guidelines that have been set forth, they should not meet in groups of more than 10, why don't the grocery store wave to your neighbor, you get them on the phone, don't gather in groups and talk, we'll get through this in a very healthy way, we continue to follow set for disease control guidelines.
Absolutely.
Next up are the 2020 petition warrant articles.
If I may, just one more thing, like I said, on COVID-19, so, one of the areas that, like I said, we provide a wide variety of services, and some services are easy to scale back and reduced to online, some aren't. Obviously, we're not going to provide virtual police department, virtual fire department. One of the departments that's very difficult to continue level of service offering and maintain some of the recommendations from the CDC is the transfer station. And on Saturday, we ran into a situation where there's so many people home doing their early spring cleaning, the transfer station was packed on Saturday. For household trash and for recycling, some of the adjustments we made worked very well. So, we closed off the center bay of the recycling, people are just on the outside, staff are isolated by much more than six feet, residents are able to be isolated in, you know, kind of a single file line. Household trash, we didn't make any changes, that's pretty self-serve drive-through anyways, that works great. The big trouble is any of the paper throw items and the construction debris. So, and that's what was most busy on Saturday. So, that requires staff interaction to determine how much it costs to transact the money to line up and stand offloading all of your construction debris. At this time, we don't think the right decision is to stop that, we still think it's an important service to provide, but we need to do something, we need to be trying things to make improvements. The recommendation I have for you tonight is to start our summer hours now, so adding the Thursday, adding the additional day in order to spread out the opportunities for folks to use the transfer station. I was actually surprised to see how much of a budget impact this would have, $1,857 to start our Thursday hours now, it's only an additional five hours a week for three staff members, our full-time staff members there anyways. So, I think that's something that we can do now to try to spread out the demand on the transfer station, get that out to the community, let them know, please don't use peak hours, please don't wait till Saturday if you're home, come in on Thursday, use the services then. If that doesn't work, or it doesn't work enough, another option we might consider is working with a single-file system for construction debris, stopping people to wait in their cars until there's room and staff available to work with them. That will certainly slow down the service offering that we have, but I think that's the next level that we'd be considering, pursuing. The only last thing I'll add on the change in the hours, which is what I'll be looking for, vote from you for tonight, when we did the analysis, the preliminary analysis of the transfer station, the transfer station utilization actually spikes in December and January. So, the transfer station and recycling center is busiest, not even in the hours where we have the additional day. What that data told me was, there's no reason to have seasonal hours, our hours should be our hours, we should be taking that volume in year-round. By adding the third day in the summer, alls it does is spread it out, and taking away in the winter, alls it does is consolidate that to the two days. I think it's important to let the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee come to that conclusion and make a permanent recommendation, but I think it's likely that they'll recommend that we be open three days year-round anyways. So, not a big budget impact, has the potential to improve the services that we're offering in a safer way, I'd like to do that with your blessing, and consider other options if we need to for that service.
I have a quick question, have we considered using a square, so instead of exchanging cash and having to continue, and are they wearing gloves while they're taking money?
They should be wearing gloves, Fire Chief delivered gloves.
Thank you, Chief, yeah.
To all departments. As far as taking square, so, there's a million hurdles to something like that, that you don't experience in the private and nonprofit world, and there's a lot of talk in communities asking for relief for some of the requirements for doing something like that, and it's possible that we may be able to in a more expeditious manner, given the emergency, than we would otherwise, but at this time, we don't have that many places.
Is it the cash handling exposes the employees?
Absolutely.
I understand, feel more active, but the demand on the construction debris and stuff like that, that is not sanitation by our domain, and so, and then, two, if people want to wait, if we're taking our trash, sanitation's up, and gone that, and during these times, we might have to restrict our time frames, but we need daycare sanitation, that's a priority. Construction debris is not a priority, it's other vendors.
So, it could become a priority if people can't get rid of it in a timely manner and it ends up dumped on the side of the road, is what occurs to me.
A general comment that I have is, I support the idea of moving to transfer station hours, and I won't press it beyond tonight, other than from the standpoint that I ask that the transfer station committee specifically look at hours of operation, because one of the big things that I've been saying for years is that having the transfer station closed down at 5 o'clock does not help the working people.
And just real quick to that point, it's possible that even as soon as this summer, the Transfer Station Center Review Committee could make a recommendation like that, because we made some investments in outdoor lights that makes something like that feasible. And so, I think it's a great suggestion, and I hope that's something they're considering.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you, I support Mr. Napp on one, because I've seen for years that people have made requests, you know, off the hat, nothing in writing, and I think that extended hours and that available for everybody will help, I support Mr. Napp on that, thank you.
I would also like, just to be clear, I'm not even advocating for extending the hours, I'm just advocating for shifting the hours to accommodate folks who work for a living.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the $1,800?
Fifty-seven.
$57 expenditure in addition to our budget?
I'll make the motion to approve the expenditure for the added day of the transfer station.
Okay, would anyone like to second that?
I'll second that!
Okay.
I'll walk to session.
Go ahead.
What are the advisory, when the transfer station comes over, we take 12 hours, extend it, move it around?
If they come back with that, yes, that's.
Then we'll discuss.
It's a very specific conversation I would like them to have, that's what I'm going to do.
Roll call vote, starting with.
Airide. Secoshah.
Mr. Bailey?
Airide!
Article five?
Aye.
Thank you.
We are moving on to, unless you have something else, Mr. MacGyver, okay, so, select person's report, starting with select person there.
Sorry, we had to go back to 2020 petition warrant articles.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see, I thought we were done. You have language that you wanted to send.
So, the Barrington voters, as you were presented with three advisory petition warrant articles, I included a link to the warrant article, petition warrant article details, and each petition article in their own way calls for written correspondence to various elected leaders at the state and federal level. So, at the first meeting after the town vote, I'm asking how the Select Board would like to proceed with those advisory articles, at the end of the day, it's the Select Board's decision how they are handled.
Select person there?
We can forward this to our state representatives and some, and that fills our government degree.
It's not just our state representatives, the president, state and local.
So, my suggestion, I belong to the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, and I think the most appropriate way to reach the highest level of government, which is clearly what the intention of petition warrant articles were, is to take those petition warrant articles, indicate that the majority of the townspeople of town of Barrington have approved these petition warrant articles, and send them to the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, and let them digest the information.
Madam Chair?
Yes, select person.
In a discussion that I had with Representative Town on his one of his petition warrant articles, with a question I asked him, I said, if we make this change or support this change, would this lead to a state income tax? And he gave me the old proverbial yes and a yes salute, to say, you know, could be and could not be, and we're not answering, he just wanted the question by giving the gesture. I think your way of sending these off is an appropriate way that doesn't really ask me to support one of those term articles, so, thank you.
Any other questions, ideas, concerns?
Just a general comment is, my general comment is, anything that's written in here where I read a resolution for fair redistricting and things like that, fair is all determined, I guess, by who's on the other side, and.
So, my, I have the opinion that the petitioners wrote them in a way that was applicable to them, and that the townspeople approved them. I do have William Crozer's email at the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs that we would like to pursue this. Any other questions, concerns, ideas about this? Would anyone like to make a motion to proceed that way?
I'll make the motion as you recommended.
Okay, I would second the motion. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Article five?
I am present.
You're present. Select person Bailey? And select persons.
I am present.
Okay, so it fails. How else would you like to pursue our responsibility with conveying the petition warrant articles to other government entities?
May I change my vote to present, just to be consistent with?
I would like to postpone that, Chair, because the question is, at a future meeting.
You'd like to table this for a future meeting?
Yes, somewhere in May.
Why, we've.
Well, do we have a responsibility as a Select Board to do anything with petition warrant articles?
Yes, we do.
I agree.
So.
I'll make the motion.
Wait.
I'm just going to answer your question, so legally, there's no statute or requirement to do anything that's outlined in an advisory warrant article. They're purely advisory, they don't, I think the obligation you have to do anything is to the residents of Barrington, which is different than your legal requirement, and so, to answer your question, are we required to do anything, is not.
So, I will open this up for discussion, I'll begin the discussion. I thought that my approach to emailing the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs did an appropriate job of allowing this Select Board to fulfill their responsibility to those that voted as a majority in favor of the petition warrant articles. If you have other ideas of how we can fulfill our responsibility to the majority of the townspeople that voted in favor, I think we should discuss them. Select person there?
I, right under the management voters, by vote, we send our state representative, let him deal with it, we don't need to take a stand as a board, so we're passing it on to the right chain of command, I believe.
And anyone else have an opinion about that? Ideas, thoughts? Ideas, thoughts, concerns?
I think it's a good idea to kick it to the state representative, I would support that.
Would you like to make that motion, Mr. Air?
Yes, I like, before there's, uh, information in that town, I say, representative.
And you want to second that?
For the three petition warrant articles, I, I would support that.
Okay, any other discussions surrounding that?
Pending the, we get to see and weigh in on the letter that he is sending on our behalf, unless he is using very specific, I don't.
Madam Chair.
Hang on, select person Bailey?
Would you, would you stake the, the motion again because it's pressing up coming this way?
Go ahead, select person air, what's your motion?
The Barrington voters were present, presented with three advisory petitions and warrant articles on the ballot, and I like to forward that to.
To Matt Town, our state.
Matt Town, and those are the words I want to use.
Okay, are you, are you comfortable with that? Do you have an opinion about that, select person Bailey?
I would be, Madam Chair.
So you agree with the forwarding it to the state rep, Matt Town?
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to use the word number one.
Okay, so, it, so, select person air made a motion, uh, select person Nap seconded it, is there any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Nap five.
Article five.
Scotia. Air eye.
There you have it, we're going to type them up and forward them to Matt Town to.
And I like.
Utilize.
Sure.
The town majority support for these petition warrant articles as we sees appropriate.
Sure.
Okay, well, we're going to select person reports, beginning with select person air. What would you like to report out on, select person air?
Well, the, uh, conservation, um, canceled, um, through, I gave, I know that this talk going on about this, um, communication that's coming available to do, uh, maintenance and stuff, and then I have been in contact with them on, uh, the, uh, CB Bridge back on, um, and I met with homeowners and stuff, um, there's some trees that need to come down, and there's a couple volunteers willing to, um, go in there and take it down, and I was awarded the contract, so I am gonna go in there and help out the volunteers and staff the job, knowing that there's not money available yet, so, just help out the volunteers, I need everybody coming in, so I'm gonna help them out that way.
Okay, any other committees you'd like to report out of?
Um, the town, yeah, the, um, Town Lands Committee, um, we met, I played it forward with Tim Nolan, so, and I thought he was coming after that, um, and we have very good contact with him, the TA, so.
Very good, uh, select person Bailey, would you like to report out on any committees?
I, uh, I did not attend the, uh, CBA meeting, and the library meeting was canceled, so I have got to report on, Chair.
Okay, so, um, what person nap?
Uh, Planning Board, we discovered the, or, yeah, we discovered, we discussed the, um, applicant that we reviewed tonight for, um, uh, map 228, um, lot 15, which was the issuance of the building permit, um, on green.
Um, in reference to the, um, Recreation Commission, the Recreation Commission, uh, voted and accepted Mr. Dale Sylvia as their new, um, chairperson or president of the Rec Commission. They did a comprehensive review of the request for proposal, the request for qualifications for the build-out on the new area that's going on in front of the town gym. They, um, discussed and made recommendations on how to handle the virus and what to do in reference to Recreation essential staff, um, they reviewed documentation of how to handle before and after school care programming, it was a very well-executed meeting, um, with not a lot of extra time taken up to accomplish a great deal, I was happy to be a part of listening to it, so, um, I did provide some HR recommendations from, um, the state, um, from the perspective, and as, as my area of expertise, so. And I think that's about it, um, public comment, 15 minutes, limited to three minutes per person.
Is anybody participating remotely, uh, would anybody just maybe like to make a public comment, I see Chief Walker's hand up.
Uh, Chief? No, Chief, no, Chief, I have a timer on you.
Um, just a real quick, uh, overview for you folks on this, uh, from the perspective of the COVID-19 event, um, as you are well aware, it's a very fluid operation, um, I, I probably end up on three conference calls a day with this, um, pretty much seven days a week, uh, although I, you know, in case anybody asks the, the fire and EMS, and, um, uh, we're, we're fully prepared to respond to any emergencies we're asked to respond to, uh, I'm pretty comfortable, we have, uh, adequate protective gear, um, for the, for the immediate future, uh, if this blows up, then that wouldn't have the same problem that all the other emergency services do, but, um, I'm comfortable at this point that we can adequately protect the patient and our responders, um, and get them to the hospital, get the care that they need, um, and we're, we're watching it every day and, uh, following recommended changes as, uh, as the state and CDC come down with us, so, if you, if folks have any questions for me.
Is there a strict protocol for when you go in on a victim, victim's house, does everybody know that?
It's, it's, uh, they've given us a guidance, and, um, if we, if, if they meet the criteria through the 911 system for, uh, potentially being infected, then there is a, um, protocol in place for which, um, we will, um, see if, uh, we'll limit the number of people that have, uh, close contact with a patient, um, and they came down with a guidance process, as long as we're wearing the proper PPE, um, our people can stay in service, if they're not wearing the proper PPE, that's when we have to take them out of service, but we currently have enough PPE that we can, uh, properly outfit at least for the short.
Do we, are the volunteers all taking care of them as well, they're wear, uh, are they outfitted with, um, the proper equipment? Cause sometimes the volunteer firefighters can get there a little bit quicker if they're right there, are they also?
So, the issue is, is less likely to happen on a flyer-type related incident, um, but, um, for medical aid, um, we have policies in place which our responders that make it there, had the ambulance, will wait outside until the ambulance gets there so that we can be properly protected before we go inside.
Excellent, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Uh, and you did that, by the way, in two and a half minutes, good for you.
Is there any other public contact for folks participating electronically? Hearing them. Doesn't look like.
Yeah, here we go, moving on to request for non-public for purposes of personnel.
And reputations.
And reputation. So, um, would anyone like to make that motion? Select person air, seconded by Nap, so at 8:18.
I'll be nodding.
Thank you.
Scotia. Air eye.
Article five.
Nap five.
And we, select board's entering non-public.
George, we will call you on your, um, personal phone, okay?